Next, please.
Special reports, communities and schools.
So I'm gonna ask Ms. Charles to come up, and I believe she has Ms. Yunus here as well.
To Dr. Maleko, to President Petchulakoff, and to all of the trustees.
We now pronounce you graduates. It's really why we're here, talking about our partnership with community and schools. My name is Danine Charles, and I'm here with my wonderful colleague.
Good evening.
Rima Yunus, she's the principal at Lori. And we just want to talk a little bit about what's going on with that partnership and why it's so important. First of all, it really goes with our vision and our mission. We know that we're really all about students first, and we found that community and schools has that same goal and vision. And we'll talk a little bit more about that, but it really coincides with our goal number one, which is to maintain high graduation rates, and also goal number three, which really talks about building relationships and making certain that students are attending school in order to have that outcome of a high attendance rate. The beginning started with Dr. Maleko and the DFT really introducing us to communities and schools. The first meeting was held on June 13th, 2017. And we sat down and really talked about what we wanted, what we were looking for. And we found that they're the nation's largest organization with regard to helping students stay in school. And one of their main goals is to bring services to the schools. And we know that we have a very rich community. I talk about that a lot, how we have so many generous people and organizations that are willing to help our students. Here is another organization that is nationally recognized, that also wants to help students in Dearborn. They have a delivery model of three tiers. That first tier talks about school-wide services, which is about 75% of the school population, or more, that would receive the service. The second tier is targeted programs, and the third tier is individualized support. And that's for our students that need more help. That would be more of a case management caseload for those coordinators. And they would really give the students more targeted, precision type of support that they need at their school. Our first cohort was in 2017. We added 11 schools, 6.5 positions, and seven coordinators. And if you look at the list, you'll see that some of those schools have the same color, which means that one coordinator provided service to those two schools. But you'll see that Snow Elementary is a different color. Smith Middle School is a different color. They had one full-time coordinator. And all of this was decided upon need. So they had more of a need to have the coordinator there at all times. At the very end, you see Etzel Ford, they have a .5 position. So they don't have anyone that's there full-time, but the person is there part-time. The second cohort happened because we were able to expand. Based on the overwhelming support and positive comments from the principals, and even some of the ancillary staff at the schools, we were able to add six schools in addition to a gift or donation from CIS of $180,000. So it's not any money that's coming from our general fund, but that was a gift to us because they believe in our district, they believe in what we're doing. So we were able to expand and add six schools. And again, the same process. We have one coordinator per two schools, so they will share one coordinator. And as a matter of fact, those interviews are happening tomorrow. So we have all-day interviews. And we have about eight candidates that we'll be interviewing for those positions. There were some vacancies, one at Bryant. That person ended up taking a job somewhere else. And then we also have a vacancy at Etzel Ford, so that's a .5. So we're looking to really find some really good candidates. And we believe, based on what we've seen so far, CIS will go through the first vetting of candidates. We had about maybe 35 applicants. And then we look at the principals doing that second round of interviews so that we can select the best candidates for the schools. But the outcomes are the same. Barriers to learning are removed, students stay in school. We talked about approved improved attendance, which is goal number three. And of course, goal number one, increased graduation rates. But I really believe the real test to all of this is the principals working with those coordinators. So they're not just in the building, they're not just working in isolation. They are to become a part of the team and to really collaborate with current ancillary staff that's in the building. So social workers and any other staff members should be working with the coordinator, not in isolation. So Principal Yunus is going to talk a little bit about some of the supports that have been as a result of the CIS coordinator being in her building.
Good evening. So if I could sum up basically what our coordinator does in our building and the things that she's brought forward, I break it down into three quarter category categories. Building community partnerships is huge. It's profound what she has done for us this year. The different programs that she's been able to bring into our building, and then working with at-risk students and the caseloads that she's had for those particular students. And what's great and unique about this position is like, Danine mentioned, every building is unique and different. So that coordinator works with the building administrator and social workers and our school counselor and really identifies the need for that building in particular. So not one size fits all. It's really unique and it's catered to the building needs. I know Mrs. McDonald, you were at our gleaners event. She, you know, we started a program last year where gleaners would come over and they would do a mobile pantry drive. And Dr. Maleko, you were present as well, and Mrs. Peterson was there as well. We allow for people from our community, from our school, in addition to anybody in the community that is in need to come over, and there's a pantry drive that we, where we give food out to the parents in need. And it's great because our NGHS students are involved. They're out there working, and they are able to give back to the community. It's really profound. If you guys ever can make it over to us and visit, rain, shine, freezing that day you came.
Freezing.
Freezing. We're out there, and we're working with our community. So it's really a beautiful event. And these are the just, you know, some of the little things that they have, they've done. I mean, they're, they sound like they're little, but they're really amazing. If for any month we don't, we're not out there, our parents are calling us and asking. I mean, this is how much they appreciate this. Recently, we've done a Girls Who Code. We've worked with the University of Michigan. And we have volunteer students that come over and that are working with our students once a week after school. So this is really neat for our kids. And then all the home visits that they do to work with our students. I mean, that in and of itself is just huge for us. Just identifying specific things like, you know, not being aware that certain families just don't have furniture and just reaching out to local community members and being able to support our families in that way. So just different job descriptions that really, like you mentioned, Glenn, like the sky's the limit. Anything we ask of them, they figure out a way to help us and fill those gaps that are necessary and needed for our families, for our students. I'm just, I'm blessed to have her, so I can't even imagine not having her at our building. She's just played such a pivotal role in our school.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Dr. Mead.
Maybe I missed it. What are the qualifications for a coordinator?
That's a great question. Our first year, the qualifications were pretty much open. But this year, I found out, maybe just two days ago, that they have increased that, Dr. Mead, so that the coordinators that they're looking for have to have a degree in either social work, criminal justice, a psychology major. So they're really looking for people who are really well-versed in understanding relationships, how the human mind works, and working with all types of students. So that's something new this year that they are asking for as a part of the criteria. Thank you for that question.
Trustee Lane.
Is the funding, I mean, you mentioned the CIS contribution. I know of them through Detroit Public Schools. Is it fully grant-funded?
No, it is not fully grant-funded. For that second cohort, that $180,000 is a grant gift from CIS. For the other 11, that money will come from our title for funding allocation.
So in that case, just for my own intellectual modeling of this, in what way does, is this a supplement to unmet needs for social work, for teachers doing home visits, to psychologists, maybe? And I mean, we've had community liaison positions, we have social work positions, we have psychologist positions. How does this differ? Is it an amalgamation of all of those?
That's another great question. So the difference is that with this position, it is an additional layer of support because if we were to go by the National Association of Social Work, they suggest that you have at least one social, one social worker per 250 students. So if we're looking at, let's take Fortson. We know we have, what, about 3,000 students? And we have, I believe, maybe three or four social workers. So it's short. We don't have 200, one per 250. So these individuals that we're bringing in, who are well-trained in restorative practices, they receive lots of training before they come to us from CIS. They are trained to handle some of those issues that would come up. And they're also working with the ancillary staff that we already have in the school. So it's an additional layer. They're coming with a certain level of expertise. And it's even more this year because of the new criteria to apply for the position.
So Principal Yunus is here. I'm just wondering, is there, is it necessary for the principal at the school to agree to?
You know, I think it's, I think it's a phenomenal question. And I just, I want to say it's not in lieu of, because our social workers, our school psychologists, they do have their caseload, and they are indeed doing the things that you mentioned, home visits and meeting with these students on a regular basis. But what's great about this position is it does identify those kids that may not fall into those categories, that are not special ed, that may not fall under social work, and, you know, for any reason. And that's what's so unique about this position is that they don't have to be necessarily labeled under any department, but they do need services, they do need help, they do need somebody to reach out to them and assist in whatever the reason may be. And this is what's so great, is that they are there for that. So they're that, that cushion of support that we are limited to with maybe a school psychologist or a social worker.
So the principal, principals pretty much agreeing to this before it comes into their school.
Oh, yeah, we meet with her, we meet with her regularly. I mean, this is up for, we sit down, we talk about these kids and what their needs are. And then she then follows through and comes back to us with additional information. I mean, it's really a back and forth.
Trustee Barry.
I got a question and a comment. I guess with the CIS grant, what are our chances of getting renewed next year?
I don't know.
Is there anything we have to meet, any sort of criteria?
This was basically because of the work that we've done from 2017 up until now, they were able to have those additional funds. And we didn't do anything to qualify for it, per se, except the relationship and the work that we're doing. And I would have to say the relationship that Dr. Maleko has with CIS as well. You know, it's all about, we tell the students it's about relationships, but they're very pleased with the work that we're doing. And I would think if money is available, the same would happen next year, and we would want to expand it even further.
Because I'm looking at this list, these six schools. I know at least three, possibly four, that the need is there, definitely. My comment was gonna be, I just heard, not one size fits all. Music to my ears. This is the discussion that we've been having, equity versus equality. And what Ms. Charles said, that there's, you know, two schools. You mentioned them early, I don't need to mention them, but the need is there. We all know the needs there. So the fact that that's recognized, that's key. So thank you.
Thank you.
I just expand on that answer, too. I mean, this, it first came to my attention about three years ago prior. It was supported by the National School Board Association and the National Superintendent Association, AAS. I saw it at the conference. Then when the MFT president, David Hecker, contacted me with Chris Cipperley, this is going back now two and a half, three years, and they had this program. The nice thing about this is it's research-based. So when we would go and hire like a liaison or this, this school's doing this, and this school's doing this. There was no uniformity, or there was that professional training. This program then brought in the professional training. What happened this year is I did contact them because I told them that we may have to cut a percentage as we were cutting every other staffing level. And when Mr. Hecker came back to me and said, because we had, you had to have so many staff, but they were able to find some money to allow us to expand. So the only reason we expanded is because they found money through their foundation. Now, I don't know, hopefully we'll have it again next year. But I think part of it is that they see the success we've had in Dearborn, so they're trying to promote it as well, and more throughout the state of Michigan. So we're no longer affiliated with the Detroit. And now it's the state that's taking over the connection with, and that's what, that's who Danine talks to, is the people from CIS. So it was really a positive. And so the other thing is, I had all the principals that came together, and we were talking about the budget cut, and we were looking maybe at 15%, possibly. But then when he came up with the money, we changed the idea because we had the free money for our staff. It was a consensus. Everything, I mean, I remember what you said in that meeting, the principals were just telling us the great work that they're doing with the students. Not only telling us, but we saw it because we've been in the buildings and, you know, to the food pantry and other things. So I would hope that in the future, we may be able to expand this even more. I think Principal Akadra even said that, you know, she was like, she would like to maybe merge it with her liaison program so that they get that high level of training. So it's, it was a real positive. So I just thought I'd expand on that.
Dr. Mead.
So back to the qualifications. So the people who are coordinators do not have to be certified teachers?
No.
They don't have to have master's degrees? They don't have to have bachelor's degrees? And they are trained differently?
They do have to have a degree.
They have to have a bachelor's degree?
Yes.
At least, okay.
Yes.
Then after that, they get the specialized training?
Yes.
Okay, so it's more open for opportunities for people?
It is. And one of the things that we really tried to do was to make for certain that it was accessible in terms of the application to as many people as possible. So AppliTrak had the application, CIS, of course, on their website, but we also sent it throughout the community to different organizations to give everyone an opportunity to apply.
And we did have an opportunity to interview multiple people. So Mrs. Charles really did an amazing job with giving us a plethora of people to interview and see what, the needs of our building and what we needed.
Trustee Lane.
Well, problematic for, for large systems, and Dearborn Schools is a large system, is integrating all of its parts. So I just wonder how this integrates with Dr. Bazey's department? Because, I mean, we're talking about children or families that fall through the cracks. So how is it that you're able to coordinate efficiently?
I think a big part, and you can definitely address it, a big part is the communication and collaboration. So at the very beginning of the year, they are to conduct a needs assessment. So they will do that and get all types of demographics and information about the school from the principal. They'll do some surveys, they'll get that information and take that. After all of that information is worked out and looked at and analyzed, each coordinator meets with the principal, and they discuss that information. Then they talk about what the outcome will be. They come up with a support plan for the building, which includes the principal having a large hand in determining who's going to be on that Tier Two and Tier Three for support. So Tier One is 75% of the school. Everyone can be a part of that. But Tier Two and Tier Three are more important because now the principal is working with the coordinator to say, okay, these people already have social work, we've taken care of Mary Lane, we've taken care of Dr. Maleko. But we have 10 students, 5 to 10% of the population. We have 10 or 20 who really need some targeted assistance. So the principal is agreeing, along with that coordinator, to really have some precision time with those students on that caseload.
I'm just, my only concern is, we don't always need an MD. Sometimes someone needs for a routine infection or something. They need maybe a physician's assistant. You maybe don't need an attorney, maybe you need a paralegal. I just don't want to see a substitution for a lower-quality profession when you have social workers, for example, were dealing with acute problems, and not have people who are trained psychologists, maybe, substituting for other professionals. In other words, I don't want to see a substitution for lower-paid, lower-professional services.
And it's not a substitution.
That's my only concern. Supplementing, expansion of service, yes. Substitution for cheaper service, no.
You know, I look at it more like the experiences that they're able to provide. Just, you know, like, you know, when I go through my list, like, providing free tickets for the Detroit Pistons after school, figuring out ways to allow our students to get that experience. They've never had that opportunity otherwise. You know, the Michigan Science Center. Now, we get free tickets for every grade level for our students to go, you know, experience that. Sometimes, there was a student that was coming in late last year all the time. And through her home visit, she discovered that the mom had several kids, children at home. So to put them all in the car and bring them, it was causing a huge disruption, and the mom just had a very difficult time with it. And she arranged through the neighbors, figuring out which neighbors lived next door, if they could carpool, and that problem was solved. And the kid no longer had an attendance issue and being late. Just things of that sort that don't interfere with what you're saying, Mary Lane. It's more like just figuring out solutions, helping us figuring, figure out solutions through that intervention, through that communication that they have with the teacher, with the administrator. Things of that sort.
And it's bringing services to the school. So maybe there is some additional social work that needs to be done, and there aren't enough social workers. That would be a conversation with the principal. And maybe there's someone who's providing that, that is certified in the community, that could meet with a particular parent or family. Because sometimes students fall through the cracks. You don't always know about everything at once. You find out later through people talking. So it's just an additional, not just, it is an additional layer of support that hopefully we catch all of the students and no one slips through the cracks because they're there, and their eyes are there as well.
Is the person generally from that community? So they're aware of the needs and the ins and outs of that particular community?
Great question. Not always.
Okay.
But we have had some applicants that are from the community. And that's why we make sure that it's out in the community so that they also can apply for the position. So it's really a very, I think, diverse group of people. Some speak the language, some don't. But the principals, and I'm just recalling from last year, the interview process, they were very aware of helping one another out. So if you are at a school and you don't need someone who speaks Arabic, then of course, you're going to let that person go somewhere where you definitely need someone who speaks the language. They were very considerate of looking at all of the candidates and thinking about who would be best for what school.
I have a comment, too. I just, I think it's a wonderful program because I really like always making those connections and partnering. And, and the whole purpose of our neighborhood schools is so that they are the hub of the neighborhood and that everybody in that neighborhood thinks of that school as part of their family or, you know, where everybody belongs. So it just makes the connections right there. I think that's important. So thanks for your work.
Thank you.
Okay, now I have a question, and I'm always going off in a different direction. The liability issue. You talked about maybe the, this coordinator arranges for carpooling or whatever. Where do we stand with the relationship with the parents using a coordinator and accepting? It sounds like a variety of different options of help, depending on what their needs are. And where does our liability fall if, say, the coordinator suggests something that ends up not being the best solution in the end, and the parent comes back and says, hey, look, you sent me to this person, and they gave me a, you know, bad deal?
The principals are in constant contact with that coordinator. So before they really go out, even a home visit, most times, we like for someone to go with them. They have, in most cases, what should happen is that they have discussed it with the principal. And it's a conversation. They really aren't giving out a lot of advice that has not already been discussed with the principal. So they're meeting, they're telling the principal, here are the people that I'm looking at, here are some things I want to do, what do you think? It's constant communication. The coordinators are not working on their own.
Okay.
The other layer that's there is that they do have a supervisor. Her name is Thana Ali, and she is returning this year. We've established a wonderful relationship. She and I meet, sometimes I meet with her and all of the coordinators. And we always have a Monday conference call. So we're always on top of things that are happening if issues come up. She's, she has no problem discussing those with me. But there's constant communication. That person is not operating alone, kind of like with the board. There's no one voice. That person has to talk to the principal before they branch out and make decisions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? All right, then, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, please.
Bond.
So we have Mr. Musa and Mr. Jaffer.
I was gonna say, Scott Bond.
Yeah. And Mr. Wall may be part of this, too.
Good evening, board, and Dr. Maleko. Joining me, of course, is Mr. Hassan Jaffer. When it comes time for us to kind of ramp up these efforts to spread out information, I can't do it without my trusted colleague. Yeah, that's right, our sidekick. So just, we're going to give a very brief, very high-level, 30,000-foot view of our bond proposal that is on the November 5th ballot. We do have a much longer detailed presentation that we'll be giving at the schools, every single school. We kind of gave an orientation to our principals on Friday so that they are aware of what, what needs to happen at the school level, as well as making sure that every single school has some type of meeting where we can come and present this information. We'll also have this information, obviously, we have a website with the information on it. We also will be having this, the presentations available on that website as well. So every bond has to have, has to have a name. And ours this year, just so we have a little visual aid to help us remember, this year's, the name of the bond is the Bricks Bond. And so I got a brick right here. Make a point. And the reason for that is because this, this bond is all about buildings, renovation, infrastructure, capacity, and safety. You know, we've really been talking about this bond for almost two years now with the Infrastructure Task Force, who brought this proposal to the board. And they had quite a bit of work before they brought that proposal to the board. And then from there, we moved on to actually refine and put together a bond proposal. So we've been talking about this for a long time, but we're kind of just ramping up our efforts now that school has started. What's this bond all about, and why are we doing this? Well, this is really at the basic core of it. 34 buildings, average age is 65 years, and lots of needs throughout our schools. Just as we may in our own homes, come home tonight and take a look around and say, you know, ah, house curtains might need a little, need some, something new, or I might need some painting in the house. Those are those kinds of everyday type of maintenance things. These are the kind of things that we usually fund out of our, you know, weekly budget or our regular budget. But then we may step back out of our homes and take a look at the roof, hot water heater, things like that. Windows, siding. These are the bigger, bigger ticket items that we have in our own homes. And we don't do them all the time, but we do need to do them in order to maintain our home and keep it for a long period of time. This board, not only this board, but previous boards have made investments into our school district. Matter of fact, over 100 years ago, this school district, the Fortson School District, Matter of fact, over 100 years ago, this school district, the Fortson School District and the Dearborn Public School District, two separate school districts, both had commitments by their citizens. A bond issue was approved to build Fortson High School, the first million-dollar high school in the country. And then in 1944, our school districts merged and came together. So ever since that time, we've got buildings dating back very soon, over 100 years old. And there's a lot of tradition in our districts of support for those buildings, maintaining those buildings, getting as much out of those buildings in order to provide our students with the best possible learning environment. 240 million, this is the amount that this bond proposal will generate. 240 million dollars is the amount of money that will be used throughout the district. Every school will benefit, four to five million dollars at every elementary school, approximately eight million dollars at middle school level and about 15 million dollars for every high school. So every high school will benefit, big dollar amounts for every school. Again, all of that detail, we have on our website in our more detailed presentation. But just that big dollar figure that we want everyone to remember is 240 million. Again, all schools will benefit, there's those figures that I ran by for you as far as on each level, what schools can expect. So the other topic that always comes up is, you know, how much is this going to cost our taxpayers, our residents? Your current millage rate right now, the amount of money you pay to pay down debt on existing bonds, there's bonds from 2003 and there's bonds from 2013. Paying down those two things at the same, right now is where we're at. 4.82 mils is assessed and that is the amount that's needed to pay off those bonds. Because we are paying those bonds down, adding these additional new bonds will not increase that millage rate. That millage rate will remain the exact same amount of 4.82. This is not a renewal and this is not a continuation, not in the least. We have bonds that we're still paying off and we will continue to pay them off over the next few years. As we pay them off, these new bonds will fill in that place of where those old bonds will slowly go away. So this is not a renewal, this is not a continuation. These are new bonds. Our election date is November 5th, 2019. We have all types of information that is available, again, on our bond website. We will be sending a flyer similar to this one to all the homes in Dearborn very shortly. Every single home in Dearborn will get this, which contains a lot of information about what this bond proposal is all about. We will also be doing presentations at the schools, which are open to the entire community, as well as doing some public forums as well. That's our bond proposal.
You know, David and I look forward to presenting these, all the details about this bond to our community. And we promise you one thing, we stand in front of you today with this promise, we'll be completely transparent. It's so important for our community to understand the ramifications of this bond as far as the need, its need and why it was put forth unanimously by the board, approved by the board, by you. And moving our district forward, you know, we talk about all the exciting achievements that our kids are hitting year after year and the highest graduation rates in the history of Dearborn Public Schools. But these things need to have safe environments to sustain them. All the programs, all the innovations and all the wonderful things that are happening. So this bond will address these needs. We will go to the community and we will have the conversation with them and then we'll come back to the board with our feedback. But it's set, it's November 5th and hopefully the community will see the wisdom of voting their conscience on this bond. Thank you.
Yes, Trustee Lane?
I'm eminently confident that the community will pass the bond. I have no doubt about that. I've lived in Dearborn 30-plus years and the only way not to pass a bond is to have a campaign against it and people have to work hard because this community is supportive of education and good quality services for the city. So I'm very confident that the bond will be passed. However, that being said, it's not good planning to say, we're not going to think about the alternative. So I would like to have at least Dr. Malenko and the cabinet and have a prepared answer. What happens if this bond does not pass? Do we, and basically my answer is, we sit as a community and we do the same thing that the state of Michigan and the United States has done for the last 30, 40 years. We watch our infrastructure fall apart and we watch little cracks start appearing knowing that we either have to pay now or pay later and pay more if we pay later. So I would like for everyone to think about an answer if the bond does not pass. And we have to, I mean, the first thing we'll start to see will be, we'll start to dig into our fund balance. We will have to start taking money out of routine maintenance. And then what beyond that, I don't even know. So I'd like that to have some thought, although I don't think that that is going to be a real thing, but not to explain to people what does happen if you don't pass this.
I mean, this bond, as you know, Trustee Lane and all board members, this was done out of utmost necessity. This, something that we deliberated and you made the decision out of need, nothing else. And hopefully, you know, we'll have, I hate to think about the alternatives, but your point is well taken and definitely our community is entitled to know what the ramifications would be.
Trustee Thorpe is going to bring up a question in the action items. And several of us said, what? How much money are we spending on that? Are you kidding? And then Mr. Grzinski said to us, well, do you want this? And I'm not going to steal his thunder, but you know, think about what happens if you don't spend this money. So I would like that to be considered.
I really believe that the community needs to understand that, we've given this a lot of consideration. We recognize that our buildings need to be maintained to be safe environment. We're not asking for some kind of unnecessary fixes. We're talking about boilers, we're talking about windows, we're talking about roofs. I mean, these are things that just are a safe environment for our students. It's nothing glorious that we're looking at. Toilets that flush and drinking fountains that work. So that being said, the community also needs to understand that our general fund operates our daily business. We don't have a lot of leftovers to manage fixing the amount of buildings that we have at the age that we have. And what we are discovering now is that a lot of our buildings, a lot of the equipment is old enough that we're having to reinvent it practically. Our elevators and our heating and cooling systems, they are old enough that parts are no longer available and we have to replace them or refurbish them in such a way that it is a costly endeavor. And it's not something that we took lightly when we made this decision to look at. A bond that, we are looking at another 20-year life cycle for this new bond as the old bonds are retired. And I want people to understand, but they will be paying the same amount. They just won't be getting a tax break if this bond does not pass, which they will see a tax break. But in that case, just as Trustee Lane said, we're going to have to somehow find a way to keep our buildings running. So something else is going to give at that point because we're not getting the money from the state. We're already wondering what our budget's going to look like come September when they finally announce what they are willing to give us in state funding. So we know that, we look at the worst-case scenario and hope for the best-case scenario when it comes to these kinds of decisions. And quite frankly, you know, we have no wiggle room anymore that we used to have. We just can't build a reserve fund that would cover these kinds of costs anymore. It's impossible. And the state is also mandating that we keep a minimum amount in our reserve funds that we aren't allowed to just spend. So once we get to a certain point, or they'll put in an emergency manager, like they've done in other districts.
That's true.
So we have to be very careful with what we have to protect this district moving forward. So it's, nobody likes to be taxed, we all know it. But it's a necessity to do business.
Yes, Trustee Barry?
Yes, I'm sure we'll have other discussions moving forward, but in the spirit of transparency, I was so happy to see when we just opened this up, thank you for following up, that zero increase in the millage rate. Most people don't understand, millages know that this is going to be a new tax that they're voting on. So I really truly appreciate that. Just to give you a heads up, I've been hearing the community, I'm sure most of us have under-capacity purchase of high school space at Henry Ford College. People are like, wait a second, don't we own these buildings too? Most people that you're going to run into don't understand that, yes, it's shared governance, but it's separate budgets. So be ready to answer that question.
Yes, that property belongs to the college, not to the P-12. And in order for the P-12 to do anything, to use that property and to renovate it for P-12 usage, it has to belong to the P-12 in which case ownership has to be transferred by a purchase.
All buildings belong to the taxpayers.
Right.
Investors, that's what I've been getting at.
Yes, I've also heard that question as well. We've already paid for it, why are we paying for it again? It's because it doesn't belong to the P-12, it belongs to the college. And I understand, it's confusing. Is there anything else anybody would like to share at this time? Yeah, this will be an ongoing conversation for the next several months. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.